Time is five o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting order. Adrian, can we have a roll call please?
Director Rice.
Here.
Karate Simon.
Here.
Lappy.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Miranda Soder. No. Rahah.
Here.
Thank you.
We've called the board, we have a forum. Item number two is public comment, anybody who wishes to address the board at this time? See none. Recognition of guests and visitors, we have Miss Kate Hildebrand from ARI and Rochelle Vanegut from Ingenza to go over the plans for the new building. Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. It's fun to be back here after, I think it was six weeks ago that we last game and gave you an update. So a lot has happened in the last six weeks and I just want to recognize ARI. You've spent a lot of time meeting with your design team, your admin design team, and they have listened to your staff and come back. I think we met with them four or five times. And every time they took that information and came back. So I'm excited tonight for you to see the plan, the overall building plan. But just a little update under communications. After since we presented at the last board workshop, I'll send you the design team meeting notes that we've got. But we've also done a Chisholm project update article. Then there was a STEM article for Chisholm and then there was a smart TV article that had gone out. So really celebrating the good things that you're doing here. We've met, as I mentioned, with the design team or members of that for about four or five times over the month. So getting their feedback and input on the spaces and then coming back again. And so I'm excited, like I said, for you to see that. Also, the surveying of the high school and elementary property began on the week of April 27th. So that process is going on. And soil borings are scheduled for the week of May 22nd geothermal. So look, did you want to say anything about that? So that'll be coming up the week of May 22nd. And then we had a good meeting with the city this afternoon in public utilities and water and sewer and just going over the plan with them and making sure that they understand the plan and that we're all on the same page. So unless you have questions of me, I'm gonna turn it over to Katie for the plan.
Correct. Okay. So I'm gonna kind of inundate you with paper, but the overall plan is really hard to read. So I also have a blown up version, as we talked through that. But as I pass this out, we're so. Identify that we've had the opportunity to meet with staff multiple times and I think we're getting really close. So during our design process, we have multiple phases. Schematic design is the first phase that we try to get through. And the goal of the schematic design phase is that we have all of the perks and pieces. All ingredients to the school are pulled together. That we're not missing anybody, we don't have a box that's not showing up on the plan. We've identified all the space needs and we've started to develop on onto a floor plan so we can see the adjacencies and the connection of those spaces with the coordinating disciplines. So there's a lot of design that's left on these plans. But what we're looking for tonight is just kind of an overall approval that we're moving down the right track. And we have our user group meeting, so we'll go back to the users of these spaces. So the teachers, the maintenance crew, the kitchen staff, you know, so all the end users of the space where you're gonna take the plan that you have in front of you or go back to them. And we'll start talking more specific about the spaces. How does the classroom layout? You know, do they have windows? What do the doors look like? How are we locking? Are we sharing spaces? So that is kind of what we call design development. That's the next phase of our design. So tonight is still fairly high level, but we're not anticipating anything moving at this point. All the big boxes are kind of in their spot. And we're gonna start moving to the next level of detail. Make sense? So if you pull up the concept site plan first floor, that's the one that's got the overall site plan that's associated with it. And if you look at the overall plan, you can see where it says the existing gym. So that's the existing gym. That's your end of the existing high school as it sits now. So to the north of that is where we are identifying the addition for the elementary. So immediately you'll see that we'll have the new gym that's attached close to the existing space. And then we will also have the supporting locker rooms that will be associated with that gym. We've made a couple modifications to this plan when we met with the team last week. So we've already made some adjustments that don't show up here that we're working on. But overall, the gym will be attached directly to that existing space. So north of the gym, you see a bunch of spots on the plan. That's your commons. So when you walk into the elementary entrance, you'll see right away that you'll open up onto that common space that will sit about 200 students. And then to the left of that, you can see that's the new kitchen. So that will be your serving line and opportunity for before school and after school serving as well if there's an event in that space. So as you continue along the north side of the plan, you can see that is where the elementary comes together. And I've got a blown up version of that wing, so you guys don't have to try to squint there. I'll share that with you. But again, just in a general sense, you've got the entrance in. We've got immediate access into the district or into the elementary office. And then we'll open that up into that elementary wing. So as you move down the plan, if you use your existing gym as kind of the base point for conversation is if you move down the plan, that left-hand corner, that's your existing fitness room. And I get this wrong every time, the choir band room, yes, that we are looking at relocating. And so that bottom left-hand corner would be identified as the district office. So we would have a public access point. We would have mechanical and electrical. We've got a boiler plant that would be located there as well. And I've got a blown up version of that as too that we'll talk through a little bit more specific. And then as you move through the high school, you can also identify that we are proposing some renovation to kind of that core space of your high school. So your existing entrance into the high school, into the media center, we're looking at opening that up, creating a high school commons so that the high school students also have a spot to be before and after school. So they're not hanging out in the elementary commons to try to continue to keep some separation between the elementary and the high school students. So developing that with some soft seating and just ability for students to have a spot to be in the high school as well. And then along that that kind of bottom core, you'll notice that we've got like community that is located down there and some classroom space will remain in that location as well. So overall, from a first floor standpoint, I think it really meets the needs of all the departments and also kind of captures the oldest part of your building, which is that northwest corner, and gives that the opportunity to to get that up to speed and identify a spot for that district office to be located on that level. Overall, site plan hasn't changed a whole lot since you guys have seen it last. The concept is still the same. Where we're trying to make sure that we're maintaining independent bus drop-off, parent pickup zones. So you can see where there's a existing bus loop. So it's bus traffic only, comes in, drops off and leaves. There should be no parking, no driving in that lane. So beneath that, then, we would develop some spots for the high school students to park near the high school. And then on the the north side of the plan, we've got an elementary drop-off and pickup zone there as well. Yep, so we got the elementary drop-off pickup zones. So again, independent from the bus loop. And then on the west side of the plan, we've got a service entrance. So you know, things are really separated with this concept. And we don't have a lot of interacting of large vehicles with pedestrian vehicles as well. And as Mike noted, the accessibility into the site is also something that we're, you know, making sure that we're providing. So your new elementary entrance will be on grade. We've got some thoughts for accessibility on that northwest corner. And then of course, your high school entrance would be maintained as an accessible entrance into the space. So any thoughts or comments overall on what you're seeing in front of you before we move to the second floor?
Yes, Mark. Katie, is there a, the new gym, I'll call it the new gym. Is there a hallway that runs on the outside of the commons area there?
Yep, so any of the area in yellow is circulation. So you can see how we're connecting the new addition to the existing space.
Because one of the comments that that I got from the people over in Evelyn was that when gym class was let out, they're racing through the commons area. And that seemed to be an issue. And also the the rooms in the area, you got two K, you have two twos, two ones, and then you have one four and three.
Yep, so that on the main level, and I'll share that with you, that's four years. So that's your early childhood. So you've got a four-year classroom, a three-year-old classroom, a head start classroom. Yep, and then the the four through six is upstairs. Yep. Yeah, great questions. Okay, I'll run you upstairs and then we can we can always come back around and I'll kind of show the the blow up. So I'm gonna zoom in on this because we don't have to talk about the site quite as much. But upper level, so the concept is again, moving the the higher grade levels upstairs. So we've got through third through six that would be identified on the upper level. In fact, I may just, well, I'll have this on in a second. And then there's the connection back to the gym. So although it's not highlighted in yellow, the the concept is that there would be a walking path that will be located around the upper level of the gym. So where it identifies the word concourse, there would be walking. There'd be viewing then into the gym space. And then also the ability due to the a fitness center up on that upper level. So along that long walking path would be the athletic equipment. So there would be areas for students to, whenever you have spring sports, you know, stretch and use the gym and just give another spot for for not only after-school activities, but during the school as well. And then you'll have a second level view onto that common space on the lower level. So there's a nice connection between the upstairs and the downstairs. So I'm gonna pass out these. These are the blown up versions of what you're seeing. So this is the first floor elementary plan. And then I'm gonna pass it upstairs. Yeah, so stay here a little bit. There's so much to land, you gotta try to show all of us, but yeah, yeah.
As you pass it over, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Absolutely.
The committee, have they determined type of walls, glass that go in the middle or?
Yeah, so we haven't determined it yet. That'll be one of the things that we'll talk about. I think it's gonna be a hybrid of both. I think there's gonna be maybe a little bit more than the role of Evelyn, but a little bit less or a little bit more wall space than at Evelyn. But still having some view into the into the corridors is kind of what I'm hearing from them. So if we go back down the first stair, our first floor elementary, I'll just kind of talk through how that has come together. So bottom right-hand corner is your entrance into the school. Entrance vestibule, again, you'll have an immediately secure entrance. So you'll have to go into the office to check in. Behind that then would be the the principal's office. We also have in that space, all right, two here, is some support office space. You've got your dean of students. You've got kind of a flex open office touchdown space. So any of your itinerant staff, if somebody's there for the day, like a speech or an OT or somebody that just needs a spot to put their stuff. There's an open office space, a head start office that supports the four-year-old, three-year-old pro or supports the head start program. They need a little spot for their things, so that's located in there. There's a shared work or resource room that would be used for the administration and also the teachers at that level. Some file storage and a conference room that's located in there. The nurse is on the bottom left-hand corner of that administrative area with access from the commons area. So if you've got a high school student that needs to use the nurse, they would access through the commons. If you've got an elementary that needs access to the space, they come from the elementary wing. So again, just trying to be, you know, overall kind of cognizant of the the shared and the crossing the path between the high school and the elementary students. We've created two entrances into that space. So once you get beyond the office space where it says step seating, we're thinking that that's a learning stair. We've got again, some connection from the lower level to the upper level. It could be used to provide, a couple of classes could sit out there if you have a speaker coming in. So it's a little bit of a, you know, not an auditorium space, but a space that you could provide, you know, a couple of groups and they've got the ability to be stacked and seated on the stairs. It's also used for accessibility from the upper level to the lower level. So classrooms are just spread around the exterior of the wing. About 900 square feet for each classroom, which is pretty standard. It's more similar to Evelyn than it is Grand Rapids. So when we did the walkthrough, we heard that those were a little bit smaller than they wanted to be. So we're trying to stick around that 900 square foot mark. And then the the littles get closer to 1,000 square feet just because of the other activities they have happening in the classrooms. So then kind of sprinkle through the center core, we've got again, some circulation. Stairs that are on the the back hallway currently are showing toilet room similar to the Laurentian Elementary where it's got the single stalls and then the lower sink so a teacher can view what's happening. There's no kids that can get stuck behind walls there. So there's easy viewing and making sure that there's no monkey business happening in the toilet rooms. Then the center where it says books and flex, that's meant to be media for the lower levels. So we're not putting in a library, but we're identifying locations that the books will be located. So we're using that center core to support those media center needs. And then along the bottom, you can see we've identified those support spaces. So we've got, you know, North homes and title rooms and special ed spaces that are multiple sizes. So as those programs grow or change, that we've got different sized rooms to help support kind of the growing industry in those areas. So they're meant to be really flexible and used not only by the the itinerant staff, but also for if a student needs to get pulled out of the classroom. They're meant to be kind of a shared space for those as well. Any thoughts or comments on that level?
I guess I'll ask you again.
Yeah.
I need toilets in kindergarten, but you won't have them in?
So we pull them out, yep, first and second. Typically by that level, we don't see those within. So they are really close. That's why those toilet rooms in the corridor are really close to the first and second. So they're a joint away.
And then just the five toilets will be enough?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, the class had to be split in three sections, let's say. I mean, the daycare centers coming and whatnot, that might increase the population.
Yes.
What, is there a room to manage that?
Yep, so if you pop up to the second floor, yeah. Guys are so good at like prepare for it. Give me the second floor. So if you pop up to the second level, you can identify this a similar footprint. So again, we've got the classrooms that run kind of the outside of the wing. And again, there have been some feedback on this plan. We did do a few changes as we moved through. But you can see we've got two of each grade level that run above. And all of those classrooms are again, at that 875, you know, right around that 900 square feet. So we've got two spaces that that sit on the upper level. So that smart lab at 875, we made that as a standard classroom. So if there is some growth, we know that that smart lab, that that would be, could come back to your high school media center space. Because there is some thought about growth in the upper grades for that smart lab as well. So there's an opportunity to relocate that in the future. And then we also have that multi-use space with that shown on there for 1,200 square feet. That's really not identified for anything specifically now. And so that's a flexible space that could be used in the future. So we've got some growth and the thought of making these classrooms all the same size is that if you do get a swing in one of your grade levels at any time, you know, those rooms are are flexible and they should be able to ramp up or down depending on who you've got coming through.
Lockers are big enough to share for two if you have to.
So the locker room counts. I don't remember them off the top of my head, I could run through and grab them. In the corridors, they're enough for one for each kid at the grade levels. Yep. Yeah, and then when we get on the second level, that 1,500 square feet of STEM space in the middle, that's meant to be again, a pretty flexible lab. The thought is that that's got, you know, your art class, science class. That could also be a flex classroom in the future if it would need to be. So that'll be set up very similar to the rest of the spaces, but that's 1,500 square feet. So that's like a classroom and a half. So there's a lot of opportunity, you know, after school care could happen in there. But that's just meant to be an an extra space that again, as as your education changes and grows, that you've got that hands-on learning space at that higher grade level happening in the center core. And then you can see on the north end where it identifies books and flex. It's the same concept as the lower level where that's really your media space where you've got your books and and media material for your upper grade levels. That's more open and integrated with some learning and seating space in there as well. And then same thing, we've got here a handful of the sped spaces that are multiple sizes and score footage. You know, so you've got some flexibility and use over those as they change over time. And then I think probably the biggest thing is we also added an elementary music classroom to this side. We originally had identified that maybe the kids would just come across and use the high school. But when we really looked at the distance that they'd have to, they were a little worried that they because it's a little bit of a jaunt. So so we actually were able to find 1,200 square feet on that level to provide a music space. And it's over the kitchen, so there's no office space below it. So it found a pretty good spot after we had needed, after we met with them as well. Yeah. So the last handout that I have for you guys is that existing corner of the high school. So this is where your fitness center is and.
This is SLE.
Yes, SLE is one of the lower levels.
Okay, so like this was.
Yep. Yes, yes. Yep, yep. So this is the proposal for the district office and boiler room. So one of the, one of the challenges obviously we have is you're dealing with your existing high school and the changeover of your boiler because everything's fed by the elementary school now, correct? So in order to kind of keep on a a good construction schedule, the thought was that we would provide a boiler plant or a boiler space within the high school so that we could rule your high school over independent and not have to wait until the elementary school is built to backfeed. So there's plenty of space in this corner to provide some boiler space and then also some maintenance space on that back as well. So being able to have that on an exterior door or an exterior wall and then having that direct access from the existing alleyway will provide good access for the maintenance team. So on the south side of the plan, the proposal would be use the old fitness entry. So you've got that existing stairwell off the back. So you'd have your entry into the district office. You can see on the right-hand side, you'd have the superintendent and the administrative assistant to support him or her in the future. And then on the left-hand side, you've got the additional support space. So we've got room for IT, there's a business manager in there, a little break space or meeting room for the administrative staff. The boardroom would be located in the space as well. Facilities and grounds would have a spot within this. And then there's just some flexibility space. So there's some storage needs as we've heard. There's probably more things right now than we have space for. So knowing that there may be some more records and things that need to come over the district office. So we've got some ability to have files in the space as well and then just providing a couple toilet rooms for that administrative staff. So this is a little bit premature because I'm not sure how big that boiler room's gonna need to be. I don't know if it'll have to be that big, but we know we've got plenty of room in this corner as we continue to develop that again, everybody that needs a space will be able to provide a space in there as well.
Custodial room on first floor of the? Of the new?
Yep, so we'll talk custodial space and we'll have to learn a little bit more about other equipment that you guys are planning on using. If you've got the little Zamboni that needs to park or, you know, how big those will be. But the goal would be to have one on each level of the elementary wing and then one that would support the common space as well. So my anticipation is there'll be three that will be intermixed throughout the plan. So on the second floor, you see it by the toilet room and the first floor are the same. On the first floor, it would be where the toilets are, right around the corner.
Oh.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's really, it really is coming together. There's, I mean, there's a ton of detail on there that, you know, then like I said, a lot of it still needs to be, well, brought to the the team, which is why we're meeting with them next week. So I would anticipate by the next time we're here, you'll see a lot more detail and we'll start moving into more of a 3D view so you can really see how it's connecting. But at this level, I feel really good about where we're at. I think we've got everybody identified that they have a spot. So now the fun start, the fun starts with design and how we're gonna attach it to what we have already, so.
I just want to say that I do appreciate that Architectural Resources talking to the staff and listening. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It makes life a lot easier for all of us. If if you're listening to what they're asking for and if you can do it. I everything, I get that, but if you can do it, I do appreciate that so much. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So is there a, like, for the new part, is there like a break room or a lunch room for the?
A staff resource room. Yep, so if you look on the second floor that says teacher, 600 square feet. So that is meant for, yep, both the first level and second level. So they've got a spot to.
On each?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
There's only one for for both levels. So that 600 square feet would be for them if they need a spot to grab their lunch or if there's a little bit of work that needs to happen, but that resource room is meant for them.
Yeah, because there was another kind of a work room too, right?
Yeah, and then the the district, the office also has a work room. So like the big paper and, you know, kind of your heavy-duty staff would be on the lower level thinking this is more of a a resource. So there's a toilet room there and yeah, a spot to hang their stuff if they need it.
And you know, some of the members.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Rochelle.
You're welcome.
And thank you for hiding that there.
I'll just leave that if anybody wants any.
Sure.
Or clocking or have any one of them.
Yeah.
It's nice to see it all standing.
And it's just.
It's like a picture, man. You know, picture it, picture it, then it's like, now we can see it.
Okay. Moving on, item four, approval of the agenda. There will be one deletion to the agenda. Under personnel, item seven B, item B will be deleted and moved to a different time. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
What's item B?
Not that, I have the item B on my agenda.
That's the one that came, that was, that came today, you know, and why are we deleting it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can we make a motion to put that on discussion?
No, I'll tell you why. Here's what I think. Let us get through this and we'll go to discussion. And I've got some ideas I wanted to run by the board. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Come in.
Motion by Shelley and the chair supports. All who's in favor? I opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think it does, there's three ayes and two ahs.
Three na, three ayes, two ayes.
No. There was three ayes.
Okay. Members. Your agenda is not approved. Next, what do you want to do?
Well, Chair, again, I'd like to make a motion to put the under personnel on for discussion.
Okay. Second?
I'll support that.
Casey, second by Karati Simon. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, reports we have done. Okay, thank you.
So I did have two items that I was going to share and I'm gonna move them to the next meeting. One is we got some good news on a grant we received, but it is embargoed right now, so I'm not able to share anymore. So I'm hoping within the next two weeks that I'll be able to bring some of that more information forward. And then in a recent meeting with with North Holmes Mental Health Services, they shared that they're in the process of hiring a third person to support the high school. And so they have a posting and are are looking to expand their services to that level. So those are, those are my two and hopefully at the next meeting, I'll be able to share some more on on the first item.
Would that be for the following school year?
We're hopeful, yes.
Okay, any other reports? Seeing none. Incent agenda consisting of a minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, minutes of the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three special meeting. Carols for the month of April twenty-two-three in the amount of six hundred sixty thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Constable for the month of April twenty-twenty-three in the amount of two hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents. And item E is electronic fund transfers for the month of April twenty-twenty-three in the amount of one million, five hundred thousand, eight hundred five dollars and sixty cents. Do we have a motion to approve? So, motion by Mark?
Support.
Or by Cindy? Alls in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Cars carries. Item seven, personnel, a motion to accept the resignation from Brian Vital, Transportation Foreman for the Chisen Public Schools effective May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do you have a motion?
So.
Jackie?
Support.
And Shelley. I want to thank them for years of service.
Yes.
They've done a marvelous job. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item A, under administrative business, there's a motion to approve payment to frontline education in the amount of six thousand, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Jackie.
Support.
Or by Cindy, discussion, questions?
Is this something that we?
It's a renewal of our HR software.
Yeah, that's what it's like.
Advocate tracking and the way we can organize interviews and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Okay, item E is a motion to approve resolutions for donations. And those donations are. A resolution accepting a donation of a hundred dollars from Courtney and Jason Worley for the senior class prom. Do we have a motion to accept?
Okay, support.
Okay, motion by Shelley and support by Jackie. Thank you to the Worleys for their contribution, very nice. Go call vote, please, Adrian.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Karati Simon?
Yes.
Member Lavi?
Yes.
Member Casey?
Yes.
Chair Raha?
Yes.
And the Sodder.
Okay, thanks, motion carries, thank you. Okay, let's see, we got that and get that. Okay, there we go. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to information and we have our school board self-evaluation overview. Director Rice?
Yeah, I mean, everybody got a copy of it, you know? And I honestly, in order to go go over it all, I I do believe that we should maybe set up a working session and just sit and and chat about it. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I I agree with that, that'd be a good thing to do with the discussion in a working session.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
So I would, I would suggest, when members are ready, that you guys set up the meeting.
Okay.
Whatever day it is, because you all have busy schedules, I get that. So we have to line it up where everybody can be there and I can just be there.
Yeah, we have all those other meetings that we've already got.
We've got a lot of stuff going on, yeah. So we'll line that up and then let, as I say, let me know, I can make it, okay?
Yeah, and then maybe I'll give us a chance to come up with, maybe I'll be able to address some of the areas that
Right.
that we, that we'd like to, you know.
I agree.
And she was real open about if anybody has any questions at all, we can call her, her name is on there.
Yeah, very.
If you have any questions, yeah.
Okay, and then finally, under information, we have the enrollment numbers and for game one. That's just better than losing one.
And so I think we did skip the the under personnel, but it doesn't matter, we do it at the end there.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Especially this late in the year, doing game one.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Definitely better than.
I think we have another one coming also.
Okay, so we had a motion to move under item seven, personnel to discussion. Director Karati Simon, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair Raha. So I think that after our meeting on Friday, we were looking for, you know, ideas and ways to move forward. And I think the consensus of the board was that we really wanna, we really want to try to address this in the best fashion. And maybe we didn't have the, maybe the timing of having to put out for applications and stuff wasn't, you know, the best time of the year. We do have somebody that's licensed in our school that would like to take the position as as an option for a year, an interim. And I think that we should just go into negotiations, our negotiation committee with, you know, with him and and see how that, how that goes, so we can keep moving in a forward direction.
I concur.
Okay, other members?
I'd like to add that I I think it's great, you know, that Adrian has offered up a solution of not leaving us, letting us, leaving us high and dry, but this seems like a solution. And as far as what I have gained from the comment that he made about not leaving us high and dry was like a last resort option. And so I know we all talked about Mr. Morrison and that he would, he's definitely qualified and has the credentials. And and with the new light of finding out that he actually is interested, I thought we were all trying to find a solution. That to me seemed like a.
Why didn't he apply?
Uh, there's.
This is, okay, so if you want a job, you apply.
Well, I think there may have been many reasons that he didn't at first. And I, you know, I, that's not something we get into here because we don't, I'm not gonna speak for him. I don't know why he didn't. But he sent his resume now and sent his credentials. And I think that the way the discussion went here, I mean, and maybe I overstepped, maybe I shouldn't have called him. But I felt that everybody wanted to know if he was interested or not, so I did. And so, and he said yes, so I think we have to move on from here if he's interested. I mean, why would we use?
I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a forward-thinking plan. It's a solution and it's, it's available. So I don't know why, I guess I don't know why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, why go through the process again?
Yeah, and not get applications and not have anybody that's, you know, that's gonna accept an interview this late in the season. I mean, this.
And this way, it gives us time. If it doesn't work out, at least then we can put out for a superintendent in the right timeframe, in December or whenever, you know, they say.
When people are looking.
When people are looking, but I think, and he actually did fill in when Jamie was, you know, when our other superintendent was out, he stepped up. I mean, I I just feel that we need to give him the opportunity to.
I like to keep our talent in house. I mean, it's, you know, it's been, it's been great, you know, he gives an amazing job, but he's retiring. He's already, he's told us that, that's, you mean, you can't expect, you know, we can't expect him to, to, you know, to stay on indefinitely. So if we have somebody that's willing to step up and and do the position and try the position, I think we should take that opportunity because it's somebody that, again, we're keeping our talent in house. We're not, you know, having to go and and look all over the state and hope somebody enjoys, you know, Minnesota, so.
I mean, I mean, he has been part of our, our plan, you know, as far as when we were going through our. Uh, yeah, he's, he's aware of the whole referendum process and even just like our vision when we put that on paper before we started referendum process and he was there.
So do you think he can handle a high school principal job and superintendent?
Well, I.
I'm just saying, I know what is going on over there, that's a big job.
Why would we want that? Why would we?
It's an administrative cut, that's what it is. If he's a superintendent, principal is an administrative cut.
But that's not what we, we said, we, we had, it was for superintendent.
How come the posting said superintendent slash principal?
For here, it's the principal assist, it helps in this building. Not, it would, we'd have to, absolutely, if he got hired as interim superintendent, we'd have to put an interim principal in the high school, there's no doubt. And that's, I mean, that's.
And currently now, if Mr. Morrison is out, or the dean of students, that helps out, is that?
Or, yeah, or, I mean, yeah.
There's, there's a number of people.
People that step in, you know, and we definitely, I'm not, he certainly would be superintendent and principal of the high school. That is not even what crossed my mind. Our superintendent slash principal has always been the principal in this building, four through six.
So then I guess we have to decide if we have people that can cover the position or do we hire an interim principal?
Right.
Well, and the other thing is just that by having our entire campus moving up to one site, the vision is to have an elementary principal, K through six, and a high school principal, seven through twelve.
Right.
So we're, you know, we're in that transition and that's what we're, that we're doing. Primarily, but we have the three buildings still, so we.
We were, it is a friend, Mr. Chair, if I'm right, good job. When, when the process was going on for Dr. Jamie and Mr. Morrison, was it listed as dual responsibilities?
Mm-hmm, yep. Because this building had four through six.
Four through six.
You have somebody on site, that was kind of the idea. It wasn't really practical to always have the, the Vaughn-Stephens room principal be able to be here if necessary. So you kind of have to have somebody that can, that can fill in those, in those positions.
And Adrian's been dealing with the, you know, if there was an issue, a day-to-day issue here, then, you know, or Mr. Morrison too sometimes came over.
And then I think Mrs. Winter is, she still does all of the teacher evaluations, all the other, done jobs of the, of the principal. So it's more having a physical person because of the three different buildings, which we're ratifying with our new plan.
Okay, do it, go ahead, if you want to put it on the next agenda or whatever to ratify or to start negotiating, because we took it off this one. Put it on the next one and negotiate with with Mr. Morrison.
And I, and and I did print out, he sent me his resumes, his resume and his license, because I thought maybe you guys would want it, so I made copies for you if you do.
I mean, this is a discussion, Bob, is there something that we're missing that we're not, I mean, do you have a different solution? Because I I'm not seeing what the problem is, I guess.
Okay, the last statement that was made on Friday was, talk to Adrian about continuing. Director Soder brought it up, okay? Now, again.
He said he would.
Continue.
Not leave us high and dry.
Here's the point, this is what I.
Is he applying for the interim position?
Wait a minute here. We have a building project.
Right.
With a high school principal in that, that is not familiar.
We also have a project manager within Gensas.
We also have an accepted resignation that he's retiring.
Resignations are rescinded constantly.
Yes, but for right now, it hasn't been and it is on, it's already been voted on.
Okay, you guys go ahead and interview and do what you want with Morrison.
What, it would.
I'm not, I don't like it, okay, I don't.
That's okay.
But do you have an alternate solution, I mean?
If Adrian stays, what happens? Has anybody talked to him about what he wants?
Has he talked to us about it?
He talked to me and I want to talk.
We don't know though.
But he doesn't talk to any of us, he resigned.
This is the only, this is the only.
Okay, all right, I'm out of it. Motion through German.
Come in.
I support, moving to German, it's five forty-seven.